Evening, I'd like to call the regular meeting of May 25th, 2011 to order. It's good to see everybody. Linda, we have all members present except for Mr. Vale, who is bungee jumping in Tennessee, apparently. He's with the, we'll keep our fingers crossed, for the Destination Imagination people. So, he's a chaperone tonight, so that's great. And what we would like to do first is, Mrs. Benton is going to introduce to us our retirees. We'd like to honor our retirees for this year. Thank you, Mrs. Benton.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Good evening, everyone. This is a bittersweet evening for me and wanting to wish some of our Wilmington staff the very best as they start their new journey, but also bittersweet because I have bonded with all four of the retirees that are here this evening, and it's not easy to say goodbye. I'm going to introduce each of them, tell a little bit about them, and then we'll go down and do the presentation.
Oh, that's okay.
That'll work out well. So, I'm going to start with the art department. Suzette D'Orso, visual arts teacher at Wilmington High School, who started her career at the West Intermediate School and then graduated to the high school. She's been with us thirty-two and a half years, and many of you who come to the Roman House will appreciate the fruit of her labors, because in a minute I'm going to talk about her supervisor, Marie Shack, but we have art display, enjoy students' art work displayed in our building every month, and the quality of the work that she has been able to get out of our students is a true gift. So, we salute you this evening. Congratulations. Her supervisor is one of the reasons why she does such great work. Marie Shack has been in the Wilmington public schools for twenty-four years. She served as an art teacher at the high school and stepped up to the plate and took the role of the K-12 Art Liaison. Marie has done an outstanding job of building an art department that, I have to say, when I came here, was very impressed with the number of courses that Wilmington was able to offer to our students, and she has been a strong, strong advocate for the department. And every year, it seems, we add more classes to the program, and it is to her credit. I'm only sorry she's not going to be here for the new high school to reap the benefits of some rooms that have good air quality and the right light for painting. Congratulations, Marie. Sandra Dumont, my friend. Sandra and I bonded seven years ago, and I think it was because of our favorite aged children, and that's kindergarten students. But that's not where she started out. She was a generic specialist at the Woburn Street, Wildwood, and Shawshing School, and then was specialized teacher at the Glen Road School, the Shawshing Elementary School, and the Woburn Street School, and then became head teacher at the Beltwell Early Childhood Center. And I think it was just before I had arrived, and our connection over the developmentally wonderful adventures of four- and five- and six-year-olds really connected us together. Sandra has been in Wilmington for thirty-four years, and she, the testament to her success here is in her friends. I actually was able to attend the retirement party last week, and her friends were all Wilmington staff, and that says a lot about her connections to this community. She did an incredible job of bringing full-day kindergarten into our schools, and I give her much of the credit for helping me with that, writing that grant. And you have left an indelible mark on our program, so we thank you for that. And last but not least, this one's a hard one for me, and I don't want to get emotional, but Marilyn Allard, executive assistant to the superintendent. Now, as superintendent of schools, it's a lonely position, and you only have one person that you can count on, and that's your executive assistant. And when I came to Wilmington and was elected superintendent, I hit the jackpot, because there are not enough words to describe this woman who has served this community for forty-four-plus years, and that's a record in itself. One needs to be able to depend on their assistant, because they handle confidential information at all times, and it's very tempting for people to try and get information about what's going on in the schools through the executive assistant. But the first thing Bill McCallister said to me when I was appointed superintendent is, "I wished I could take her with me, because Marilyn is the best," and he was right. She has been secretary to the assistant superintendent of schools, secretary to the business manager, worked in payroll clerk. She started out as accounts payable, but before that, she attended school in the Roman Street, uh, Roman House, because it was home economics, I believe, that was their classes there, or something. But she graduated from Wilmington High and has served nine superintendents? Nine superintendents. So, she has outlasted us all. But Marilyn decided it's time to move on to another journey, and I can say this from the bottom of my heart, I think all of Wilmington is going to miss her. We were just joking earlier about how she is responsible for all the PDPs that all the staff has, and no one is going to be able to replace her. But to all our retirees, we salute you and say thank you from the bottom of our heart. It's not goodbye. We hope you'll stay in touch, and we wish you all the best on your next journey. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask you to come up and...
We all come up. We're all welcome. We're all welcome.
Ready?
Thank you. I don't know what to say. I love you. You're wonderful. You're good to see. Thank you.
I'm not saying...
Okay, don't say it.
I'm always watching. All right. Marie?
Thank you. Who am I going to say my bad jokes to, Marilyn? I'll miss you.
Say, yeah, say, all the best. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Favorite day to do that, um, Marie walking back from Marie Parkers.
The pictures of geese.
I thought that was so outstanding. That was a real experience. Well, we went out today, finally showed the sunshine, and off we went.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Keep the kids in mind. See, it's important. Good luck with getting in high school, and I hope you're able to do that.
I know, I know.
We're going to have, we're going to be in the toilet. I'll share that story later.
Congratulations so much.
We take one picture while we're together, so don't...
Oh, okay.
One second. Suzette.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Sandra, I always call you Sandy. Oh. We do a picture.
All together? All together. Do you want to take it? Do you want to get in it? We didn't make any retirement plans. I'm so glad we didn't see it.
We just do one more.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Bye, everybody. Thank you.
And I just need to say, to have the superintendent who's behind all this, to give recognition to our retirees, is very special. I'm not sure how many communities do it, but mine didn't. And it just shows you the humanitarian attitude that we have here and how grateful we are for our staff and all the work that they do, and the wonderful things they do for the children. So, I want to thank you, Mrs. Benton, for preparing this for us. Okay. Our next item will be items for approval under a consent agenda.
There are four items on the consent agenda this evening. The approval of the minutes from the May 11th School Committee Regular Session, approval of the field trip basketball team to go to, girls' basketball team to go to Florida in December, the acceptance of a grant from IBM to the high school, and transmitting of Treasury warrants. My first recommendation is the top three items on the agenda.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on anyone or need them to be separated? All set? All right. We entertain a motion to approve the May 11th Regular Session School Committee Minutes, the basketball field trip, and the IBM grant. Do we have a motion? Mr. Hayes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of May 11th, 2011, Regular Session, approve the field trip for the basketball team to Florida, and accept the grants for the high school from IBM.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second, Dr. Quick. And I'd like, I'd just like to mention that the girls' varsity basketball coach was invited, Mr. King, who's here in the audience. This was an invitational, this is an invitational basketball field trip that, that he's been asked, invited to bring the girls. So, that's really something special in that area, too. All right. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Okay. Unanimous, Linda, thank you. Our next item is the transmitting of the Treasury warrant, L-72, L-73, G-425, G-426, R-234, R-235, and FS-119. Do we have a motion to move Treasury warrants? Dr. Quick.
Motion to approve the transmission of Treasury warrants as stated by Chairman King.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Marchesi, thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Unanimous, are you unanimous?
Oh, I can't, because it says payroll.
No, payrolls...
No, we haven't done that one yet.
Oh, payrolls, oh, I'm sorry. We've separated them both for you now.
Sorry.
Yeah, that'll be a separate one always.
I guess I was reading it wrong.
Great, thank you. All right. And the third one, that was unanimous, Linda. Recommended motion, we move to approve the Treasury warrant 5/11/11 for payroll. Do we have, oh, Mr. Hayes.
I move that we approve the Treasury warrant 5/11/11 payroll.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Marchesi. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five in favor, one abstain. Thank you. All right. Our next item of business, okay, we're down to the superintendent's report, and we are talking about the proposed amendments to educator evaluations.
In your packet this evening is proposed amendments to the educator evaluation, and this is part of the race to the top. The commissioner put together an advisory team that has come up with recommendations on new ways of evaluating educators, including administrators. There is going to be a public forum that Wilmington High is hosting for this section of Massachusetts on Wednesday, June 1st, from 4:00 to 6:00, which the Commissioner of Education will be coming to hear public comments and the proposed amendments. And I did out the whole packet flyer so that you could see what the changes are. It is a little bit controversial in that this is the first time that Massachusetts would be connecting teacher performance to student test results. And there's a lot that needs to be worked out, because, as you know, not all of our staff have, have assessments that are, have the same sort of concrete measurements as, say, you know, the classroom teachers. And so, for example, art, how does one assess student results in judging the teacher's performance? I would encourage the school committee to, you know, read through this. It has some interesting recommendations. Because we are not a race-to-the-top school, we do not have to put it into effect until 2014, and that's a good thing, because it needs to be bargained with the unions, since we just signed a three-year contract. I think we're going to need to start early in thinking about how we're going to do this. The state, I did hear the Associate Commissioner, Colle Bear, last week at our superintendent's conference, and she said that they would be sending out templates for school districts to use, to take a look at. And they obviously have to work with the MTA and the AFL? No, yes, yeah.
AFT.
AFT, so, more to come, but...
Okay. I'd just like to add that I had, I picked these up for us from the MTA annual meeting, and it was the longest discussion of the whole meeting. It went on for almost three hours about this. And the first thing that the teachers were a little bit upset about was the fact that they didn't feel, they weren't sure that the MTA was doing enough. But the fact is that the Secretary of Education has the right, by law and statute, to change evaluation forms and to make decisions on which parts of the evaluation the state is going to require, and then which parts they want to bargain with our teachers. So, it's really, really important. If someone thinks that they will be, when the bargaining comes up, that they'll be going to be on that bargaining team, I would really suggest that you really need to go to this meeting the fourth, from 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock on June 2nd.
1st.
June 1st. I keep getting it wrong. If you don't see me there, call me. I keep getting the date wrong, I'm sorry. This is going to be interesting. I believe 150 people have been signed up a couple of days ago to come to Wilmington. It's going to be the biggest thing that's going on in education. And only seventeen percent of our teachers, they're very upset about connecting it to the MCAS scores, but in fact, only seventeen percent of the teachers would have any connection to the MCAS scores. So, that's, that's kind of a misrepresentation that's been going around. You know, so there's a lot of information that they're giving out. This book, Reinventing Educational Evaluation, is the MTA side. It's what they've tried to get started and show leadership, and if it's going to happen, their feeling is, we're going to start, we're going to start working on it now, see what we can do. Mr. Marchesi.
I have a question, Mrs. Benton. You said, because we're not in the race-to-the-top program, that it won't necessarily affect us into 2014?
Fiscal, fiscal 2014, it's 2013, 2014 school year.
If we were, I'm just hypothetically saying, if we were in that program and we had the contract, which we do already with the teachers for three years, what would happen to a contract like that? You have to renegotiate it, or just be forced in by the state?
You have to reopen negotiations.
And both sides have to...
Agree.
They have to agree to reopen it, and they have to agree to work on it. Because if the state tells you you're working on it, you have to work on it.
And who's going to fund it?
That's the big question.
Another unfunded mandate that we face.
Mm-hmm. You're right. You're right.
You see that when you read through what they expect the people to do. To me, it's, the difference is going to be in the evaluations. The evaluator's going to have a harder time, when I read through all of this, than the actual teachers. It's going to be very difficult, they have to be retrained, and it's a lot of work for evaluators. So, we'll see. So, hopefully, we can, we can, or most of us can make it to that meeting. I think you'll find it lively, very interesting, lively discussion. Robert?
Thank you. Mr. Williams, King, yep, that's okay. I did have a chance to read through it all. I'm going to hold my questions for some other time. There was definitely some good and some bad in there, and I'm not at a point where I'm going to form any sort of opinion clearly. I just wanted to ask, sort of a slightly off-topic, but how did Wilmington get chosen as the first location for, for all of this? And is it, do we get any sort of benefit for hosting a forum like this?
That's a good question.
That's a very good question. I'm not sure. I will say this, that the Deputy Commissioner, Colle Bear, is a good friend of mine, so I'm hoping that she's coming, but I...
Sorry to jump the spot.
I actually believe it was because of our location right off 93 and easy access for, if you look at the other, other locations, this really covers all of the northeast section of Massachusetts.
Our Division One, the Division One section.
I just know, like, when we hold sports tournaments, as an example, we, you know, receive financial, you know, rewards. I wasn't sure if there's anything like that to this.
Unfortunately. It's on us. We're treaty.
Okay, great.
Will it be in the library, the auditorium?
It's in the auditorium, and then there's going to be a reception that they actually are paying for, the drinks and food, in the cafeteria.
Oh, we didn't know that. That's good. Okay, great. Thank you so much. All right. All business, animals, and school policy.
This is the second reading of the animals in school policy, policy IMG. I made the corrections, cleaned up the errors and made the corrections, and I think we're ready to approve.
I entertain a motion to approve policy IMG, animals in the school. Mr. Hayes.
I make a motion that we approve policy IMG, animals in the school.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Marchesi, great. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda, thank you. Here's another one. Now, new business, we'll start with another policy item, policy JIE.
Thank you. This policy pertains to pregnant students, and if you recall, the, we, five years ago, we had a coordinated program review in which they come in and check all our policies. At the time, we did not have a policy on pregnant students. We built, put one together. Unfortunately, there was one problem with it, and we had to make a change. The coordinated program review language specifically states, "The district does not require medical certification for pregnant students remaining in class." I said that, and that's against the law, so this new language has taken that out.
Oh, okay. I just had a question. Did this go before the policy subcommittee?
Mm-hmm.
Right. We, we essentially waived it because, it was emailed to us, and we were asked if we had any comments on it.
Oh, okay.
I think there was some timeliness to this, getting this in front of the board.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure, because our process is to make sure it goes by the policy subcommittee.
It was.
All right, great.
Sorry, and Mr. Vale also signed off on it.
Yes. Oh, good. Okay. I entertain a motion to approve policy JIE as amended. Mr. Marchesi?
Make a motion to approve policy JIE as amended.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Marchesi, great. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Unanimous, Linda. Next item of new business, summer school program.
We have before you the proposed summer school programs for students in grade 6 through 12. The programs are designed for students who need an opportunity to make up, remediate, or enrichment instruction this summer. The programs will be conducted at the high school, and they run for approximately five weeks, beginning on July 5th. Classes will be scheduled based on enrollment, and we would like to get this approved this evening, so we can start advertising, because I have some anxious parents looking for a summer school.
I entertain a motion to approve the request to operate the 2011 summer school programs. Dr. Quick?
I move to approve the request to operate the 2011 summer school programs.
Do we have a second? Mrs. Carroll? Any questions or comments? Mr. Marchesi?
I have a question, Mrs. Benton. In terms of the size of summer school, it's been getting smaller, I hope, every year.
Yeah, we don't get, we don't run all the courses, so that's good news.
Okay, all right.
Great question.
Thank you.
And do we take people from out of town?
Yes, we do.
Okay. All right, great. All right. All those in favor? I mean, we already did that. All those in favor?
Yeah, yeah, now we're voting on it.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Okay, unanimous, Linda. We're just sipping along here. The award of a bid for school pictures.
Mr. Jero went out to bid on school pictures. As you can see, there were six people who responded, and he is recommending that we award the three-year contract to Life Touch, and I support that motion.
I entertain a motion to award the three-year contract for school pictures to Life Touch. Dr. Quick?
Motion to award the three-year contract for school pictures to Life Touch.
Do we have a second? Mr. Marchesi, thank you. Any questions or comments? Mr. Hayes?
Just a quick question. I noticed that this was only for school pictures at the elementary and middle school level, and I was just wondering, and I probably should know the answer to this, do we already have some sort of contract in place with a, with a, with a vendor for the, for the middle, for the high school photos, or is that taken on a year-by-year basis, or?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a separate.
It's a separate.
Correct.
Have we already approved that, or is there...
Approved last year.
Yeah.
For multiple years.
Yeah, pretty recent. I'm pretty sure it was. We'll check.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor of the school picture contract to Life Touch? Unanimous, Linda, thank you. And school lunch prices.
The legislature, in its wisdom, passed a Healthy, Hungry-Free Kids Act of 2010, which is odd, in my opinion, because what it is doing is forcing us to increase our lunch prices for the 2011, 2012 school year.
I thought that's what I read.
The provision requires that all school food authorities participating in the national lunch program, to ensure that schools are providing the same level of support for paid lunches as they are for lunches served to students who are eligible for free lunch. To adhere to this new legislation, we need to gradually increase the price of student lunches to bring them closer to $2.46, the difference between free federal reimbursement and the federal reimbursement for paid lunches. What we are recommending is, for the 2011, 2012 school year, an increase of five cents for our student lunches and 10 cents for adult lunches. Currently, the lunch prices are a huge bargain. For all elementary students, they're $1.75, and for middle and high school students, they're $2. Adult lunches are $3. This would make the cost of lunches for 2011, 2012 school year, $1.80 for elementary students, $2.05 for middle and high school students. Adult lunch prices would increase to $3.10. Lunch price also takes into account the impact of the local meals tax that was passed at the April 30th town meeting for adults. We have to add a tax.
Oh.
So, I recommend that you approve this increase.
So, because we voted in the meals tax, we have to put that meals tax on our school lunches?
Yes. For adults, for the adults.
The adults' lunches.
Yeah.
Okay. Wow. We are going to, because this is a new thing, and we might want some discussion, or we might hear from the public, it sounds like there's not too much we can do about this at all, that if we want to keep getting our federal funds, we need to do this. Mr. Jero, will you, oh, you just...
No.
Yes, Mr. Marchesi.
So, just to kind of restate what Mrs. Benton said, this is not because we're in a fiscal constraint or something like that. We're being mandated by the state, by the state, to raise our lunch prices, even though we can, we're fiscally responsible and good and everything's fine in our program. So, they're telling us to make more money on the program, the state is.
Then maybe we can use that money to pay for the training for the teacher evaluations.
I mean, this, this is just ludicrous. I mean, if we're doing well the way we are now, I don't see why we have to encumber it on the students. If, I mean, I understand it's state law, I don't know why we can't fight it or something, or tell our legislative aide, Mr. Hayes.
I've been writing a couple letters, Miss...
You were very well this way, though. You've been helping me out.
Yeah, carpal tunnel.
Yes. Mrs. Carroll?
I also think, too, is, so, for the people that has to buy her, their kids, they're going up five cents, but the free, because the free ones are, you know what I mean? Like, I don't understand that, you know, it's costing us, us people, workers, more money because of these other people who's on free lunch. Well, that doesn't make sense. I mean, we're, we have to pay for it, you know? It happens when you live in Massachusetts.
Federal government reimburses us $2.72 for every free lunch.
But then how are you paying us? Who's buying it?
Exactly. I'm not saying that I agree with this, and it makes no sense to me. So, what the law says is, we have to get to that amount.
Try to get up to that amount. Okay, wait a minute. Mrs. Carroll?
I also think five cents, $2.05. Do you know how many kids are not going to have five cents? So, that red is going to be red. I mean, there's going to be a lot of people in the red.
Mr. Hayes?
Yeah. And, you know, it's sad. I also just wanted to point out, this obviously isn't going to be a one-time increase. This is going to be a gradual five-cent increase every single year until we reach $2.46. And right now, we're just, we're going to be at $2.05. So, I foresee this five cents, talk about nickel and diming, five cents every single year. So, it's very unfortunate, and I, I'm, you know, it's very upset that we can't do anything about it, that we're constrained by, by the government.